Good morning, everyone. The Delaware County Commission Meeting for November 1st, 2021. Where has the year gone? Is now in session. Would you stand, gentlemen? Please, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Malprez of the board this year. To my left is Vice President Commissioner Bart Lewis. To my right is Home Commissioner Jeff Benton. Don Huston, our Deputy Administrator, is with us today. One more to clerk, Sarah Johnson. Let's begin, Jennifer.
Resolution number 21-1059, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held October 28th, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1059. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today, so that brings us to item number three, resolution number 21-1060, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 1029.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Vote on motion 21-1060. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1061, in the matter of accepting the treasurer's report for the month of September 2021.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1061. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1062, in the matter of authorizing the use of procurement cards for the treasurer's office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion? What's your card? You won't say anything? Or you're here, so I send you.
The treasurer's office does not currently have purchasing cards, so.
Introduce yourself.
Rick Carr, Chief Investment Officer for the treasurer's office. We currently don't have purchasing cards and would certainly appreciate the ability to have a little flexibility.
Not a problem. Call for vote?
Vote on motion 21-1062. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1063, in the matter of approving the supplemental appropriation for the escrow administration inter-fund revenue.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
Yep, Rick Carr was the treasurer's office. So this is, we serve about 1,028 residents by providing an escrow equity program, or escrow program for them to basically put their taxes in an escrow with us and the team administering that. So all we're asking to do is transfer some additional money into the wage category to cover the time and expenses for administering the program.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1063. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1064, in the matter of authorizing the Delaware County Sewer District's participation in an Ohio Department of Administrative Services contract for uniform rental.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Morning Commissioners, Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So we've been using Cintas for the past couple of years and they've been doing really well for us on these services. They provide uniforms, PPE gloves, electrical safety equipment, kind of all of the above, floor mats, Germax stations, quite a bit of stuff for the $45,000 per year.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1064. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1065, in the matter of approving amendment number two to the professional services agreement with H.R. Gray and Associates for on-call construction inspection services.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
So just due to how busy we've been with the development items, this is a $70,000 add-on to our contract with H.R. Gray. It'll raise the total contract value to $250,000 for this year. So basically, this is the funds that are paid back by the developers through their inspection fees. It's essentially a pass-through where we contract hire some of this work out when we're not able to cover it all on our own.
Questions or comments?
So by asking for an increase, I'm assuming you're near the full authorization previously?
We are, yeah. I think we will run out in a couple of weeks. So we're gonna, this will get us through the rest of 2021.
Okay, okay.
Questions or other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1065. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1066, in the matter of setting the bid date and time to receive bids for 2021 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. Commissioner Loos, discussion?
So this is the project that we budgeted for 2021 sewer rehab. This is a kind of an annual program that we're going to be doing every year moving forward, where we're finding areas that need repair and going out and actually making the fixes. This includes 8,000 lineal feet of cleaning and televising, eight to 15-inch sewers, also doing internal lining on 4,600 lineal feet of the eight to 15-inch sewers, lining seven manholes and replacing two manholes. The total engineer's estimate is 444,000. And this is done in some of those areas that I talked about in the past couple of weeks where we were getting work agreements on Africa Road and then also in the High Meadows area behind Meyer on 23. That's where a lot of the internal lining is going to be performed.
Questions or comments?
So this is, when would you do this?
So this, this will bid December 3rd, I think is the bid opening date. Obviously, we'll have, you know, a month or two to get the contracts in place with them to get ready to move forward with whoever the low bidder is. I would say they'd be moving forward on this in the winter. This is some work that can be performed in the wintertime, just depending on temperatures.
Do you do this system-wide with all the lines over a period of years?
Well, so we have a comprehensive flow monitoring program right now where we have, I think we own like 50 flow meters that are out in the system. We've identified this High Meadows area as an area that has a lot of infiltration and inflow into the system. We're seeing spikes. Whenever it rains, we see spikes at our OEC plant because of this area. So yes, if we identify additional areas like this, we'll go out and make repairs so that we can bring that, it's called INI, bring the INI rate down and not see so much rainfall into our system.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Call for vote?
Vote on motion 21-1066. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1067, in the matter of approving revision number one to the sanitary sewer subdividers agreement for reserve at Scioto Bluff.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
So the only modification to this subdividers agreement is to move the completion date to November 5th. The Scioto Bluff's developer has met all the requirements. They just needed an additional two weeks to get their lien waivers completed with their contractor. This still allows EPCON to tie in at the completion date that they needed, so we felt like it was fair to move this date back a couple of weeks.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1067. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1068, in the matter of certification of delinquent accounts to the county auditor for accounts to be assessed to payable year 2022 taxes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
So these are our certifications for the May, June, and July billing cycle. It is 4.07% of our accounts for this quarter, which is in line with what we've seen over the past six or so months, or actually, I should say over a year now, that those delinquencies have come down from the 5% level to the 4% level. The total of the delinquencies for this quarter is $146,489.2.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1068. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1069, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds for the regional sewer district.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
So these are just our budgeted transfers for 2021. We do this in the kind of October, November timeframe every year. We bring over 3% of our user fees and then the rest comes out of the capacity fees to pay for the capital projects that we're doing right now. I think the total is close to $11 million that we're bringing from the 662, which is where the revenues are paid in, to the 667, to where we're paying out for these projects.
Questions or comments?
Vote on motion 21-1069. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Director Mag now has her monthly sanitary sewer approval update for the board.
So we had a very busy October. You can't even see all the items on here off the scroll down, but they tend to continue to be in the same areas that we've been talking about, you know, for the past several months. The first one at the top, we had a couple of plan approvals, you know, the new plans moving forward, Hyatt's Meadows Development, multifamily. That is located along the Hyatt's Road and 23 area, just near our new pump station, just west of it. It actually flows up to the Greif Parkway Sewer though, not, not south and over to our pump station.
That's the north side of Hyatt's, right?
It is, yeah. North side of Hyatt's. It's a 16 apartment buildings, lifestyle communities development. And then we have Liberty Grand. They have quite a few projects on here. I'm not going to break down each and every one of them, but they're working on section seven and nine right now for new plan approvals. They also have quite a few where the sewers are being accepted and they're getting ready to build houses down. I'll show you later in the blue items. Smith Farm at Carpenter's Mill, this has been on here for the past several months as well. They're moving forward pretty quickly with the rest of their sections in the area, which is, it's in the Powell area. You can kind of see it down here. And then Hidden Creek Estates, section two. This is 18 single-family lots by Homewood. This one actually, it was originally platted back in 2007 and never went forward, and now they're getting this project moving, moving back forward again. Then we also have a few Evans Farm items. We have the Marketplace Townhomes West. This is, I think this is, this is the commercial piece and then at the bottom, I'll show you the apartment piece. Smith Farm at Carpenter's Mill, once again, you know, same, same project there, you know, moving forward with sections three as well. How do I scroll this down?
The pad on the, on the computer?
Yeah.
Two fingers scroll down.
Good, thanks. All right. And then we have Woodcrest Crossing. This is out in the Clark Shaw trunk sewer area. This has been on here for several months as well. They're moving forward with sections two, three, and four. We also have, once again, Liberty Grand, sections three, section four. Those are MI Homes projects, single-family homes. There's 45 units in section three, 44 units in section four. They seem to have a lot moving forward in that area. And then once again, Woodcrest Crossing, sections two, three, and four. This is specifically section three, has the 34 ERUs. And then Evans Farm Marketplace. This is the apartment and mixed-use buildings, 52 apartment units in total for their, their marketplace project that's going forward. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments? We have a lot, this is the time of year we do see a lot of sewer acceptances because they're trying to get the roads done before the snow starts flying, so they've been busy.
It's a busy time.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
No, thanks for the.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1070, in the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation for ditch maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Good morning Commissioners. We're both in our engineers' office. Brett Bacon with me today, he's the Director of Soil and Water Conservation District, and if there's any questions, I would defer to him.
Good morning Commissioners. Brett Bacon, Soil and Water Conservation District. This is an additional appropriation to our 5328 line, which we use to pay our outside contractors performing services for drainage maintenance. We've significantly increased that pool of contractors this year over past years. This supplemental is a reflection of the amount of work that we've been able to accomplish this year and have several projects we'd like to be able to, to continue and complete, so we'd ask for the, the approval.
Any questions or comments?
Vote on motion 21-1070. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1071, in the matter of approving driveway work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
Yes Commissioners, this is six utility permits. There's nothing out of the ordinary and we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments?
Vote on motion 21-1071. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1072, in the matter of approving the developers' agreements for 3Bs and K Road contribution in conjunction with Hidden Creek Estates and the owner's agreement for Hidden Creek Estates, section one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Yes Commissioners, for Hidden Creek Estates, this is the 18-lot subdivision located off of 3Bs and Cave Road in Berlin Township. The bond, this will set the bond agreement in place.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1072. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1073, in the matter of accepting the roads, approving recommended speed limits, establishing stop conditions, and releasing the security for Heather's Ridge, section two.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
Yes Commissioners, this is for 40, 43-lot subdivision located off of Hyatt's Road in Concord Township. It totals 0.19 mile of existing roadway to Heather Ridge Drive and the addition of three new roadways. They've been inspected and they qualify for the acceptance.
Questions or comments?
Vote on motion 21-1073. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1074, in the matter of approving cooperative project agreements between Delaware County and Concord, Delaware, Genoa, Harlem, Kingston, Liberty, Orange, Oxford, Porter, Scioto and Concord, and Thompson Townships, and the Village of Ostrander and Scioto Township to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Yes Commissioners, for your approval, these are cooperative agreements for projects designated by the townships involving 11 townships and a village, cooperative agreements with each of the townships and in some cases with the village and the township in partnership. This is for the utilization of $150 that are given in matching project grant funds, and then this will lead to submission to the OPWC project.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, Lee, why do, again, it's great to see, and I know this, this has been around for a long time, why do only 11 take advantage of that? Do you know why the other seven would not?
I do not have the answer to that Commissioner, but we would be more than welcome to service all 18 townships within the county.
I imagine all the towns, all the townships have road projects that would be eligible for OPWC, but maybe not. Okay, just curious. Thank you.
You know, you know Commissioner, you bring up a good point. I think would be practical for us to maybe reach out to those townships and see if we can provide service in this regard.
It's a good idea, yeah.
It is Commissioner, thank you.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1074. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you, Lee.
Resolution number 21-105, in the matter of approving the Ohio Department of Health Contract Unit Tuberculosis Funding Agreement between the Ohio Department of Health and the Delaware County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
Good morning. Don Huston, Deputy Administrator. I'm recommending your approval of this agreement with the Ohio Department of Health to help offset the cost for the management of the county's tuberculosis cases and also education. This is for work performed in 2020 and the due date is December 31st, 2021.
Questions or comments?
Do you know if we have any tuberculosis cases?
You know, I was wondering about that this morning. I have not heard of any, but I can certainly check with the Health Commissioner to see if there were any cases in 2020 or 2021. Maybe Jennifer knows.
We do have, we do have active cases, yes.
Okay. Generally, there are a few, but I just had not heard of any.
Any other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1075. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1076, in the matter of acknowledging receipt of a petition filed by Kerbler Builders and others requesting the construction of improvements to Home Road and Green Meadows Drive, both located east of US Route 23 in Orange Township, Delaware County, Ohio, and assessing the cost therefore and setting date, time, and place to view the proposed improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Vote on motion 21-1076. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We, before our hearing, we do have one other business item here.
Let's get the other business, maybe even do reports before we get in here.
Okay. Resolution number 21-1077, in the matter of approving an employment to the Delaware County Transit Board.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second.
Good morning Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you an appointment that we're recommending to the Delaware County Transit Board, Jason Sanson, and this would be to fill a spot for a full term, so we recommend your approval.
Any questions, comments, or observations? Jason, I think will do a great job. I think he'll be a great addition to that board. And with that, I call for vote.
Vote on motion 21-1077. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and do the reports. Don, you think this way?
Sure. Open enrollment information was sent out this morning and we're getting the typical questions that, that people have, which is fine.
And what's my password?
What's my password? How do I log in? All those are easy questions to answer. One of the questions we're getting is if I'm not making any changes, do I have to log in? And the answer is yes. There are required tasks in Employee Navigator, so everyone will need to log in to complete those and select or decline benefits for 2022.
In a perfect world, everybody does it over those two weeks, but it's not a perfect world. I assume there's a procedure to follow up for any you haven't heard of.
Yes, absolutely. We actually have very good reporting mechanisms in Employee Navigator, so we know who's been in, who's, has finalized their benefits, and who still needs to log in, so we will be in touch with them.
Commissioner Loos?
Gosh, I have nothing.
You're not up again.
I know, no, I don't think, no, I have nothing. I'm going to wait and hear what Commissioner Benton has to say, and then I might, I might add a few words.
I think that would be very gracious. I'm sorry for that.
The weekend sports report is what you're expecting.
Well, I prepared it for Commissioner Loos.
Just a couple of things. We had regional planning Thursday evening. Scott was here and did a good job again as, in leading that group. Actually, that was one of the quickest meetings I've been to. It was, wasn't even a half hour, I don't think, but interestingly, there's a lot, lot that was approved during that time period, so congratulations to Scott and, and all those who attend and participate in that. I know you do as on the executive committee. So anyway, again, a lot of activity, a lot of good things moving along and a, and a good process in place. We've got a WICA ribbon cutting tomorrow. It's a new company that's building a facility in Creekside in Orange Township. Nice expansion, great business, new to the community, so glad to see that and it'd be good to participate in that, and that's tomorrow. We, Auditor Kitesa sent around the state, the Auditor of State's financial health indicators, and Delaware County received 16 green ratings from the state auditor and one yellow, cautionary. The green ones are the best. The yellow is just a kind of a heads-up, they're, you know, just keep an eye on this sort of thing. But I can't imagine any other county in the state got any more than, than we did.
Well, the one we got had to do with us using cash to pay the asset. We see it's kind of a, I sent it up to George, we talked about it, it seems kind of a unreasonable penalty.
I know, I know. Well, and they're, again, they're, they're doing a nice service. They're, they're, you know, they're, they're really helping those counties and other jurisdictions who aren't rated by the rating agencies. We're rated by the rating agencies and we have AAA ratings by both the major ones, so we're, we're extremely strong financially, but this is very valuable for those jurisdictions who aren't rated, and it can be used to monitor on a, on a somewhat high level their, their financial indicators. So again, thanks to the auditor's office, both the county auditor as well as the state auditor for their work on this. It's, it's very useful, it's an affirmation that we're doing very well financially and managing our finances very well. So that's good, good to see, good to hear. And that's it.
Really don't have a lot to add. I'll also be involved in ribbon cutting tomorrow and I think it's at 1:45, the actual ceremony. And remind everybody that the, tomorrow is election day, if you have not already voted. And trustee raises, number of levies, school board, city school board. And if you follow the national media, the school board elections are very important
And if you follow the national media, the school board elections are very important this time around because of everything that's going on nationally. And I have, I do have a, I'll call it a political comment. When you have a climate event in, in Europe, and you have a limo caravan of eighty-five vehicles, it sounds a little hypocritical. And, and that's just our representation, that eighty-five vehicles, which defies logic. With that, I believe we do have a need for a hearing.
Resolution number two one dash one zero seven eight, in the matter of Delaware County Board of Commissioners' public hearing to consider the approval and adoption of amendments to the subdivision regulations of Delaware County, Ohio pursuant into the Ohio Revised Code Sections seven one one point one zero, seven one one point one three two, and seven one one point one three three.
Second.
Motion made in second, question, vote?
Vote on motion two one dash one zero seven eight, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two one dash one zero seven nine, approving for a specific occurrence a suspension of Rule Three speaker registration, Rule Four limitations, and Rule Seven public comment procedures from the rules governing public comment before the Board of County Commissioners of Delaware County, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, in discussion?
Vote on motion two one dash one zero seven eight, oh, I'm sorry, one zero seven nine, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
With that, I'm just gonna kind of read the, what will, the rules or the guidelines that we're following today. Public hearing to consider the approval and adoption of amendments to the subdivision regulations of Delaware County, Ohio pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code. Welcome to those who are in attendance today. There is a sign-in sheet, although many people are decided, but you really drove around today.
We, we have our officer protecting us back there.
Today, we will hear a summary of the amendment adopted on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one by the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. Along the summary, there will be a time for questions from the board commissioners, and when it is timed off a public comment, we will work our way through the participants if any have need to speak or desire to speak. And after listening to testimony, the board will consider the amendments for approval and adoption. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Scott Sanders, I'm director of the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. Interestingly, the Regional Planning Commission was established sixty years ago in nineteen sixty-one to provide planning services for general, and general information to all government entities in the county relating to land use planning, zoning, and coordination of activities. We achieve that mission through providing zoning and planning services to member communities, including zoning text amendment recommendations, serving as consultants on long-range planning efforts and through the subdivision regulations, which is why I'm before you today. The process that we're following is defined in the Ohio Revised Code, which is why it was initiated in June, after much discussion, particularly with these changes with the county engineer's office and other, other agencies throughout the county. The Regional Planning Commission had a meeting on, or a public hearing on August twenty-sixth, and that is when these were, changes were approved and, and moved on to the commissioners, and then you followed your own required public hearing process. So you, you probably have access to a packet of, summary of, of the changes and actually all of the changes. A lot of them are housekeeping, just changing terminology from the health district to the public health district, code compliance to building safety, specifying some, some signature timeframes, correctly referring to the county engineers' design, construction, and surveying standards, which was a reference to an older document. The, really, the only changes were to the preliminary plan submission documents and also the final plats. The preliminary plan changes were just to bring things into conformance with the fact that we share things through the, through the software. We don't need a copy of all the things that the county engineer gets, they don't need a copy of everything that we get. So specifying which, which are, are sent to each agency because we can then share that saves paper, saves, a lot of that can now be submitted electronically through the county engineer's office, so it is a benefit to the applicants in what they have to submit. Simplified some, some language with topographic contours, we don't need the soils information, that's what the health district will, will review. And then everything else, it's redlined. The bigger changes came about in the final plat procedure, because as you probably know, the recorder can now accept the larger size, twenty-two by thirty-four standard-sized plats, whereas before, we were limited to a fourteen by seventeen sheet. So we changed our rules several years ago to get a better quality document at that smaller size rather than shrinking down a big document. Now, the large documents can be recorded, so we've changed the regulations to, to send that back to the larger size, which will reduce the number of pages that people have to submit for final plans, because I'm, you may have seen some of the packets that you signed, the first page, some of them got up to ten to twelve pages, so this will, this will be a benefit, excuse me, a benefit as far as how many sheets of MLR have to be produced. And then, of course, we had to specify type size because of that change as well, and we just took the opportunity to clarify what we're looking for in a, in the table, total acreage, total number of buildable lots. Some of that you would think would be logical, but sometimes those get left off, and we end up having to count lots by hand to figure out how many lots are in there. So you can see all those changes there, and then you also might have a full, full-blown copy of the, of the subdivision regulations marked up. Assuming this passes today, the, the changes become effective immediately, and actually, we've, we've started encouraging applicants to submit at the larger size, so we've started seeing those come in. It just is a matter of us generating a, a copy that we can get recorded today or tomorrow. With that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess I, thank you, Scott, for, you know, staying on top of this. It's easy to let these things slide and become behind the times, but it's good to see a lot of the coordination with the recorder's office, et cetera, and the engineer's office, because it does make it easier and you put her, and saves money for everybody, it saves time, so those are good. So again, thanks for the updates, I didn't have any problems with them.
Yeah, it's a good process, I mean, it's time-consuming though, but it, but it's always, it's always great to bring everything up to date, and then to improve it with, as, as you just said, with, with the different sizes.
Yeah, just my confidence for the work you've done to do this, you and your staff, it's obviously, it takes a little, quite a bit of time to go through and be critical and make sure we do it correctly, so thank you for that, and is there a motion to close the hearing?
I will move to close the hearing. Could you please, I will ask our clerk if she would read the resolution to close the hearing.
Resolution number two one dash one zero eight zero, in the matter of closing the Delaware County Board of Commissioners' public hearing to consider the approval and adoption of amendments to the subdivision regulations of Delaware County, Ohio pursuant to the revised code Sections seven one one point one zero, seven one one point one three two, and seven one one point one three three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, Commissioner Lewis, second one Commissioner Ben, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two one dash one zero eight zero, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two one dash one zero eight one, in the matter of approving and adopting amendments to the subdivision regulations of Delaware County pursuant to the revised code Sections seven eleven point one zero, seven eleven point one three two, and seven eleven point one three three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, in discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two one dash one zero eight one, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
With that, I understand we have the executive session.
We do. Resolution number two one dash one zero eight two, in the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of appointment, employment, and compensation of a public employer, public official, and for collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, in discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two one dash one zero eight two, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We are now in executive session.